Good morning, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started with our County Board of Canvassers Elections. As today's date is November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, the time is nine A M. In attendance are Commissioners Eberlein, Duncan, and Matarri. I'm going to call this meeting to order, and I also would like to acknowledge a special guest that we have today, our Secretary of State, Phil McGrane. So thank you and welcome for joining us. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment? Anyone wish to speak? Hearing none. We'll go to our first business item. Canvas of November four, two thousand twenty-five, consolidated election pursuant to Idaho Code three, four, dash, one, two, zero, five. It's an action item, and we have our clerk here, Jennifer Locke.
Yes, A S A will cover our narrative, but I just want to start off first to say thank you to our staff. They did a phenomenal job on Election Day. I think it was one of our best elections. We get better and better each time. And I want to also thank our poll workers and judges. They did an amazing job, too. Some of these precincts had up to eight or nine different ballot styles that they had to hand out. And as we go through the canvass, you'll see how incredibly they did on Election Day for that. We had one hundred and ninety-six ballot styles over seventy-four precincts this election. So with that, I'm going to hand it all over to A S A.
Good morning, Commissioners. So I'm going to go through our narrative first and discuss everything that occurred at this election. And then we will talk about the actual, some of the actual results. We'll dive into a few of those. So starting with our machine accuracy for this election. So as you are all aware, before each election, we conduct a public logic and accuracy test. So we tested all, myself and our elections manager, Kristi Olson, tested all three D S eight fifty digital scan ballot, ballot tabulators and a D S three hundred precinct counter on October seventeenth. Witnessing the test were County Clerk Jennifer Locke, County Commissioner Bruce Matarri, Chief Deputy Clerk Grace Blomgren, and private citizen Jamie Haas. Pursuant to Idaho Code, internal testing utilizing a test deck of nine hundred and three ballots was also conducted prior to the public test to ensure every ballot style and oval in every precinct were correctly being read by the tabulators. And once again, that internal testing reflected exactly how we marked the ballots. They were all being read correctly. The D S eight fifty machines were tested again in the morning on Election Day, November fourth, before any ballots were counted. And the D S eight fifty that was utilized for absentee tabulation was tested again upon reprogramming the tabulator to count Election Day ballots on the evening of the fourth. All D S eight fifty tabulators were also tested a final time in the evening on November fourth after all voted ballots were counted. Each machine report showed a hundred percent agreement with the test deck in every test. The first set of unofficial results were posted to the Idaho State Results Site around eight fifteen P M. on November fourth. These results included all of the early voting results, which were exported from the D S three hundred precinct counters used, counter used during early voting, and part of the absentee voting results, which were exported from the D S eight fifty central count tabulator that was used to count absentee ballots. The next set of results were posted at eight thirty-four P M. and included the remainder of the absentee ballots. Of course, as the Commissioners are aware, we have to continue accepting absentee ballots until eight P M. per Idaho law. So we always do have some that trickle in right till that last minute. So we always have that second posting of absentees. The first results posting for Election Day ballots occurred at nine forty-nine P M. and included nineteen of the seventy-four voting precincts. Additional Election Day precinct results were posted at ten, ten P M. and included thirty-five of the seventy-four precincts. The final unofficial election results, including all adjudicated ballots, were posted at ten fifty-eight P M. Then the next day, we posted the overall unofficial election results PDF and the unofficial precinct by precinct election results PDF to our county website. And I want to just take a moment and divert from the canvas or from the narrative and just to show you the new state website in case you did not get a chance to look at it this election. The Secretary of State's office has moved to a new vendor for our live results site called Enhanced Results. And it is a lot, I would say from my opinion, it's much clear, more clearly laid out than the previous results site was. It's very easy to view results by precinct for a contest. You can actually, people can come in and pick which contests they want to follow throughout the election and see the results posting. So that can be like, almost like their favorite type thing. So you can see the various different results on the public site. So I just wanted to take a brief moment to show that to the Commissioners. So audits performed by our, or actually, I have one more thing here, and then I'll go to the audits performed by our staff. Including absentee and early voting totals, there were thirty thousand seven hundred and five votes cast in the election. With eight, with the eight hundred and seventy-seven Election Day and early voting registrations included, this voter turnout averaged twenty-eight point two percent for this election. That is a little bit lower than we saw in November of two thousand twenty-three and November of two thousand twenty-one, but a great increase from the two thousand seventeen and two thousand nineteen November elections, where we were in single or low double-digit turnout, literally around nine to eleven percent.
I think we're the second in the state, too, for highest ballots cast.
I don't know at this election. I haven't looked at that, but. Turnout percentages varied by precinct from a low of eighteen percent in precincts two oh two, two oh nine, three oh three, and five oh one to a high of forty-three percent in precinct four ten. Audits performed by our staff, early voting ballots and mailed out absentee ballots that were tallied by the counting machines totaled two thousand nine hundred sixty-five and six thousand three hundred and fifteen respectively. Absentee ballots are run through the tabulator by precinct, and then the ones that come in on Monday and Election Day are run by batch. This enables us to track the exact count of ballots received. Ballots cast by ballot style were matched against machine tallies in the e-poll books. There were small discrepancies on Election Day in precincts, as I will address in further in this narrative. During early voting, our staff, our elections temps, and our poll workers used ballot on demand to print voters' ballots and used a D S three hundred precinct counter to receive and count the ballots. We had two thousand nine hundred sixty-five ballots cast with additional ballots spoiled by voters and reissued. One secured voter was issued an absentee ballot by our office that was the incorrect ballot style. The voter contacted our office, and we resent the voter the correct ballot. Secured and Uakava, which are military and overseas citizens, absentee ballots are sent directly from our office and are not processed through our regular absentee mailing vendor, which is K and H. Our office conducted a double check of the absentees that were tabulated by ballot style after the election and compared it with the total, or and compared the totals of ballots counted by the tabulator per ballot style to the absentee ballots per ballot style received report in our state voter system, and they matched exactly. So that was the only issuing error that occurred, and we were able to correct it. Staff members performed with great efficiency on the D S eight fifty tabulation machines on Election Day and night, processing ballots quickly and properly. I would like to point out that the ten fifty-eight P M. results posting is by far our earliest for an odd year November election over the last three cycles. Poll worker performance, we had four hundred and nineteen poll workers working this election, and I truly want to thank them for their hard work. There's no way we could run elections without their dedication and without them showing up and working a very long day. And we could not do this without them, and we continue to recruit for more poll workers. And our poll worker coordinator is going to be going out to different civic groups and wherever she can this next year to try to get more engagement and get more people interested in being poll workers, as we will always need more. Of the two, of twenty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-five Election Day ballots cast, ninety-nine point nine nine percent had zero ballot issuance errors. Sixty-seven of the seventy-four voting precincts had zero ballot issuing errors. Precinct three oh eight had nine ballot styles for this election. Precinct three twenty-three had eight ballot styles. Precinct three zero nine had seven ballot styles. Precincts two oh seven, two oh eight, three oh five, and three twenty-two had five ballot styles. Seven more precincts had four ballot styles, twenty precincts had three ballot styles, and twenty-four precincts had two ballot styles. The remaining sixteen precincts, well, they were the lucky ones with only one ballot style. The following precincts made balloting errors on Election Day. Precinct four oh six gave one four oh six C ballot voter a four oh six E ballot. What that means is that a voter who should have only been able to vote on the Coeur d'Alene city races also got to vote on one of the Coeur d'Alene School trustee contests. Precinct five sixteen gave one five sixteen D D ballot voter a five sixteen L L ballot. Again, that was a differentiation between city and trustee versus city only or city in a different trustee contest. Additionally, a few precincts here had a difference in total election day ballots cast from e-poll book check-ins. These errors are listed here. Precinct three nineteen gave out two extra three nineteen L ballots, and there was one blank ballot cast for that ballot style. That was a city of Hayden ballot. Precinct four oh two gave out one extra four oh two C ballot, and there was one blank ballot cast for this ballot style. That was a city of Coeur d'Alene ballot. Precinct five oh seven gave out one extra five oh seven P ballot. There was one blank ballot cast for this ballot style. That was a post-falls city ballot. Precinct five twenty-one gave out one extra five twenty-one A B ballot. There were eleven blank ballots cast for this ballot style. And the reason that I can deduce for that, for that many blanks being cast for that ballot style, the only thing on that ballot was the Coeur d'Alene School District trustee zone four contest, where there was one candidate and a write-in line. And so obviously, some people chose to undervote the only thing that was on their ballot, in addition to this potential one handed out that ended up blank likely. And then precinct five twenty-two gave out one extra five twenty-two W ballot. There was one blank ballot cast for this ballot style, and that was the ballot with the city of Worley on it. None of these differences affected the outcome of any contests on the ballot. Two precincts had voters check into the e-poll book and realized after the check-in had occurred that the voter had moved within the precinct. In both cases, the elections office instructed the precinct to give the voter the correct ballot to vote based on their new address, and the office entered the updated voter registration during the canvas process. Of eight hundred and eighty-six Election Day and early voting registration forms, there were twenty-eight missing required items on the registration forms and additional registration forms that were missing entirely. Some registration forms contained multiple missing items. Correspondence is sent by our office after each election to voters to obtain the missing information on the registration forms. It is worth noting that each of these voters still had to provide acceptable photo I D. and acceptable proof of residency pursuant to Idaho Code. And in some cases, the information missing on the registration form was entered in the e-poll book system, but was not completed on the paper form. Completed forms are required by state law. The items missed are described as follows. Missing answer to at least eighteen years old on Election Day question, eight. Missing date of birth, three. Missing answer to are you a U S. citizen question, two. Missing answer to legal disqualifications question, two. Missing, missing residence time in Idaho, five. Missing driver's license or last four of social security, five. Missing gender, two. There were no missing signatures. We had one missing the residence address on the form, and there were no missing, none missing in name this time. Additionally, there were eighteen voters that we were missing the entire registration form for. These are changes the poll workers made in the poll book without obtaining a registration form from the voter. Nine of these were party change only missing registration forms, so they're not included in the total number of registration forms above or on the canvas report. Party changes without an address or name change should not have occurred at the polls, as the voter should have been directed to complete that change after the election, because this is not a primary election. With thirty thousand seven hundred and five ballots cast in this election, our staff and our poll workers did an exemplary job processing voters and running an efficient and secure election process. However, we did have a few unusual factors in this election. As I'm sure you're all aware, every election brings its own set of challenges and its own set of things that arise that we always are like, oh, that's not a normal thing we talk about. So we had several electioneering complaints between dueling campaigns for the Hayden City Council seats, which our office and poll judges worked to resolve when electioneering fell within our jurisdiction. Some electioneering issues, such as signage placed on public property or people conducting electioneering on city-owned property outside the two hundred and fifty-foot mark from the polling place is not within the legal purview of the county clerk. Extremely high turnout was seen in some of the smaller city contests, specifically in the cities of Stateline and Harrison. Twelve of fifteen registered voters voted in the city of Stateline election for the mayoral contest. And a hundred and twenty-two of a hundred and seventy-three registered voters in the city of Harrison cast ballots in their election for mayor and city council. High turnout in certain precincts by midday led the elections department to run additional ballots to those precincts. Additional ballots were sent to precinct five fourteen for the five fourteen L L ballot style and to precinct two oh seven for the two oh seven G ballot style. Neither precinct ended up utilizing the additional ballots as they slowed down as the day went on on their usage. Now, before I dive in the results, I would like to briefly give the Commissioners just an overview of this next document you have, which is the absentees returned not valid count. These are ballots that either had signature issues, were late, or in the case of one on here, I'll explain what a spoiled return means. So we had sixty-four ballots arriving late. We actually had some arrive as recently as Monday of this week. And then we had nine ballots that were rejected for lack of a signature, thirty ballots that were rejected and not corrected for a signature that did not match what was on their voter registration. And then we had one ballot that is listed as a spoiled returned. And what that means is, it can mean one of two things. It can mean that the voter requested their absentee, voted it, and then like reregistered online or in person before the absentee came back and sent it back, and then it's invalid. In this case, what it actually means, and it shows the double checks of our systems, this voter dropped their ballot off at our office on Election Day, then went down the street to their polling place and voted, and the ballot, the absentee, got rejected because they went and voted in person. So I like to highlight that because it shows how our system is catching the ability for someone to drop their ballot off and go vote in person, and we're not letting them vote twice. Now, if I may briefly just go over some of these different, I'll go over a few results on the ballot, and then I'll just go to the summary page of statistics. So we'll start at the first page of the canvas results here, the Athel City Council seat three contest. This is a good one to point out because Athel is one of our smaller cities, so the margins tend to be a little bit closer on some of these contests when you get multiple candidates, which you can see here, there are three candidates for this seat, and there was a three-vote margin between the winning candidate and the second-place one. Seven people chose to undervote this contest. Two things I want to point out about this report. One, this total registered voters count is not the registered voters in the city of Athel. It is reflecting the registered voters in that entire precinct. And then, two, this total votes cast column is only reflecting the votes actually cast for a candidate. This does not include over or under votes, and that, and the both of those statements apply throughout this report. Another thing that is interesting to note is that even in the same city with multiple council seats, people can make different decisions in how they vote. So there were seven undervotes on this contest, but if you flip to the next page for the Athel City Council seat four contest, which had two candidates, there were zero undervotes on this contest. And that is very interesting just to note that, again, voters make different decisions when they go into the polls, and no one can predict how someone is going to vote. I will go further down. I want to go to the, actually, to the next thing on the report, the Coeur d'Alene mayoral contest. We'll go to the second page of that where the totals are. This was definitely one of our more higher turnout contests on the ballot in regards to precincts where we had people voting. Especially at early voting, we do see a lot of people from the city of Coeur d'Alene coming in, and we did have a four-way race for this contest, so there was a lot of interest here. Again, you can see a small amount of undervotes and a couple of overvotes here, two overvotes and sixty-six undervotes. But what I want to point out is, if I go two more pages to the Coeur d'Alene City Council seat two contest between Amy Evans and Jeff Doc Larson, there is one overvote and nine hundred and fifty-two undervotes. Now, I don't like to get into partisan conversations very often at Canvas, but I will note that this council seat is the one seat that neither of the groups that I'm aware of that sent out slate cards of who to vote for, neither of them endorsed in this seat. So it's just interesting to note that compared to the mayoral race, and you'll see here in a moment, even compared to the council seat six race, if we go two more pages, there's only two hundred and forty-six undervotes in the council seat six race. So endorsements from groups or flyers in the mail, different things like that, we are seeing have an impact in some ways in voting patterns. Now, I would like to just go further down to the Hayden City Council contest, which is going to be on page twelve and page thirteen for the two different seats. So first, we have Hayden City Council seat number two. And this was another one, again, I mentioned some of the electioneering focus that we had on Election Day that we dealt with in Hayden. These were, again, very contentious races, and you can see, again, not a lot of undervotes, a few more overvotes, but not a lot of undervotes in this seat two contest. And again, in the seat four contest, a few overvotes, a few more undervotes, but not a lot of differentiation here. And it's worth noting that in a lot of these cities, especially specifically in Hayden and Coeur d'Alene, and Athel for that matter, these people did not have a school trustee contest in some places. Some of them did in downtown Coeur d'Alene, but Hayden by and large did not. And they had Northern Lakes Fire as well on the ballot. So a lot of the city contests were driving turnout in these areas, and we can see that through the smaller amounts of undervotes in these contests as well. And then I also just want to go down and point out, I want to go down to the school trustee contest, which is going to be down on page twenty-five and twenty-six. I want to go down to Lakeland here. Because this was also another one of our areas that we saw some decent turnout, and the trustee contest seemed to be a fair driver in this. So we had seat four trustees, trustee zone four, where we had, again, no overvotes, thirty undervotes, and there was a decent margin between the two candidates in regards to results. But if we go to zone five, you'll notice that the margin is a lot closer on these candidates. It's thirty-eight votes, which is still a decent margin for this contest, as there's only about fourteen, just over fourteen hundred votes cast. But it is closer than the other one, and there's only twenty undervotes here. So again, people were coming out and were aware of how they wanted to vote in many cases. And with that, I just want to move to the end of the report here, the last three pages, to go over some of our voting statistics. So we had this, one thing I want to point out to the Commissioners, because our, you'll notice, I'm sure that our report is different than the last couple of times. That is due to our new system and how we export that. And I honestly think, I actually, I like, I personally like how some of the results are laid out on this report to be able to read that. One thing I want to point out is these voter, voter registration numbers here include the Election Day registration totals. So in the past, sometimes you've seen the close of reg and then the Election Day registrations and then the total. This one is just a full summary of the total amount of registered voters, including those Election Day registrations, and then the turnout based on that number and the ballots cast calculation. And you can see, again, some of these smaller cities, we were driving our turnout heavily in precincts. So thirty-nine percent turnout in precinct two oh one. That's where we had the Spirit Lake mayoral election. One thing I would like to point out, since I did not stop on the Spirit Lake mayoral page, we approached you last month expecting to have a runoff for this contest because there were four candidates. One of the candidates got fifty-two percent of the vote, and so we will not have to have a runoff on December second for the city of Spirit Lake mayor. So we are very personally thankful for the fact that someone got to fifty percent of the vote. It saves our staff a lot of quick turnaround time, and it also saves the city a lot of money in regards to how, because they would be bearing the cost of that election. Yes.
Can each city make that determination? Because I think there's only five in the state that do that.
There, each city is able to make that determination pursuant to Idaho Code. Yes.
Thank you.
And then the precinct two oh seven, which is where the city of Harrison falls fully within, we had thirty-nine percent turnout, which, again, the city of Harrison, as I pointed out, had over half of their registered voters, including Election Day registrations, come out to vote. So again, these smaller cities were driving some of the turnout in some of these precincts. And then if we go down, you can see several of the eighteen percent precincts that I referenced earlier for turnout. A lot of these precincts only had Fire District Commissioner on the ballot and did not have anything else. And then if we go down to the second page into where we start getting into the four hundreds precincts, which is primarily where the city of Coeur d'Alene is located, you see fairly consistent numbers from the mid twenties to the mid thirties most of the place. And then, of course, precinct four ten, traditionally precinct four ten is one of our highest turnout precincts for the last two, three years since, since redistricting in twenty-two. That has held true across almost every election. That precinct tends to turn out and vote no matter what is on the ballot. And then, and then when we get down into downtown Coeur d'Alene, where there were some school trustees on the ballot more in these precincts, our turnout does actually start to increase more, and we get into the mid to high thirties, low forties. And then the five hundreds precincts are mostly in post-falls, which post-falls saw pretty decent turnout for their heavily contested mayoral election and council seats as well. And then our total turnout ended up being twenty-eight percent for this election, again, as I referenced earlier. And with that, if there are any questions or if the board would like me to go to any other results or anything, I'm happy to do that.
I was wanting to say that the people that were not, had anything to vote on the ballots.
Oh, yes, and there were just shy of twenty-five hundred registered voters that did not have anything to vote on at this election. Primarily, they to vote on at this election. Primarily, they were up in the Spirit Lake Fire District outside of Spirit Lake city limits, because there was no contested race there, or out in the East Side Fire District outside of the school trustee zones or the City of Harrison, where there was nothing to vote on there. And then there were a few other voters scattered around the county that don't live in fire coverage, or their fire district was uncontested, and they were not in a city or school zone that was up at this election. And we did end up sending letters to all of those voters, because we knew, one, it would be informative for them, and, two, it would help our poll workers out on Election Day. And so I think that that was helpful. We got several calls from those letters of people just asking some more questions about it, and it was a good chance for us to educate voters on some of the process.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
No? Well, I would like to say that, as usual, you do a fantastic job.
Thank you.
And we all appreciate it. So thank you. If there's nothing else, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve and accept the Canvas of November 4, 2025 Consolidated Election pursuant to Idaho Code 341205.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Public comment?
Chair Newman?
Absolutely.
I don't know if I'm coming here. It's my first time here, and I want to, first off, just kick off, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the invitation to come. I will say, it's so, this seems so obvious, but it's so informative to be in here and to see, like, navigating some of the result, like, our office has a heavy hand in a lot of what you were just seeing. So I'm making notes on little things we can refine. I think Jennifer, or Clerk Locke, made a really good point at the beginning, how the process just gets refined and better and better with time and the attention. And I will say, having sat through many, many canvases myself, including running many canvases, you have one of the most thorough and detailed I've ever seen. Not one of. You have the most thorough and detailed I'd ever seen. So I think that Cootney County deserves a lot of credit. I think Jennifer, Asa, Kristi do an amazing job in terms of just responding to the community's interests in terms of the elections. And I just want to highlight a couple of things. I think you all know this. I can see that you have a higher level of knowledge and awareness of what goes into these elections than many others do. But these local elections, like we saw last Tuesday, really are some of the most challenging elections that the Elections Office runs. They were talking about all those precincts that have eight, nine ballot styles, like, the opportunities for poll workers to make innocent mistakes is much higher in these local elections, where you have all these different overlapping districts, particularly when cities are involved, school trustee zones are involved. A lot of people look at us in the election space, looking at the presidential elections. Those are big, and the turnout is high, and so it's a huge lift to pull those off. But everybody votes for president, so it's a lot easier to get the presidential ballots out than some of these nuanced ballots when you look at all these smaller cities. And so I really want to commend them. The fact that you only have one instance of a poll worker giving the wrong ballot, I think, is extremely impressive. Our office has had to oversee elections being redone because of poll worker mistakes, so it's really a testament to the training that is provided by the Elections Team here and the quality of the work that they're doing. And the other thing is, Asa noted when he was going through some of the results, it's just that the resources that we continue to work on, we have a very close collaboration with our office and the Elections Team and the Secretary of State's office with the counties. I think that partnership is so important. The, one of the big things is we continue to invest in Vote Idaho to really be the one-stop shop for all Idahoans, regardless of what, you know, county you're in. And I think that matters, particularly being here in the Panhandle. I know one of the challenges of being in the Panhandle is often feeling neglected from Boise, and so trying to make sure we're providing those tools. And this election stands out for a couple reasons. One, it was the first election ever that voters in local elections could go to voteidaho.gov and see their sample ballot. So see whether they had a contest to vote on or not, but also see those races. And we saw it in the undervotes in some of those, where people just don't know what they're voting on. They don't know who they're voting for. And so trying to get that information, that's been one of my hallmarks of being Secretary, is to get information to voters. And then the other part is, we're really excited, is the new election results page. I can tell you from this, today's hearing, I've got a few lessons to learn that will tweak and refine it. But this was actually the first time that any race that crossed county lines, you could just have combined results, and you didn't have to do math on election night when you're blurry-eyed. All that information was there. And so I think the collaboration with Jennifer and her team and our office just continues to get better and better. And I think the fact that there's so many people here to watch the Canvas is also a sign of the success of just building confidence, because at the end of the day, it's all about building trust in our elections, and more importantly, trust in those people that were just elected, to be able to do their jobs. And I think all three of you know that very well. So again, Commissioner Matarri, thank you for the invitation to come today. And Jennifer and team, like, you guys have done an amazing job, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you for coming out, and the feedback, too. It's very important. So kudos to everyone here. Anyone else like to speak? Hearing nothing. 9:30. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.